All right, good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do have one item under chairman's announcements. I'm going to have our town administrator read a letter that was sent in by Andrea Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will read it verbatim. Dear Kevin, Tim, Hal, and Mike, and so many others, I wanted to send a big thank you to all of you. So many of you became not only a colleague of Dave's, but also he earned your friendship. He respected each of you and worked hard to see your points of view, or at least let you down easy when he disagreed with you. He had a way of making you think about all sides of a situation, even if you didn't want to. As tired as he was the last few months, he looked forward to the meetings. He truly wanted what was best for this town and oftentimes put his own personal beliefs aside to make sure the town got what was best. I was finally able to watch the tribute you put together for him, and I was truly humbled by the kind words and emotions spoken. He would have been embarrassed, but it was so deserved. He was one of a kind, that's for sure. As you begin to move forward without him, please know Dave will be with you. Keep his passion with you, and I have no doubt that the town will be in good hands. His knowledge was vast, but the way he treated everyone is what is important. I would like to address a few of you personally, if I may. First, Kevin, he wasn't so sure about you at first. He didn't know what to make of you. He knew you were there for the right reasons, and as time went, he opened up to you more. He grew to like you as a person and would at times refer to you as the little brother he never had. He knew he needed to watch over you, not because you would do something wrong, but because he wanted to. He wanted to make sure you were making good decisions and would be elected his chair over and over again. He knew you had the energy and passion to do it and continued to do it. I also want to thank you for checking in with me as often as you have. It helps more than you know and is appreciated. Chief Miglianico, that was nothing, there was nothing more Dave wanted to see you get a new station. That was the main reason he ran for office. He saw that need and wanted to get that done. He loved all the guys and girls on Douglas PD. He wanted them to have everything they needed to be safe and go home at the end of their shift. He was so proud when you were able to complete and get awarded accreditation for the department. He knew that was no easy task and didn't think others realized what an accomplishment that was. His only complaint was that you never asked for anything. He so wanted you to be more vocal of your needs, even if they were out of reach. He would have fought and found some way to get them for you. He was grateful for all of you who took Alex under your wings as he did his internship with you his senior year. He was thrilled that you continue to look out for him as he gets ready to start his own career in law enforcement. Thank you for being there for our family, and please know that we will always be there to support you and Douglas PD. Chief Vincent, I will never forget the day Dave came home from a bargaining meeting and was so excited because you two realized that you worked together many moons ago out in the Worcester area. I believe you were sent to many of his scenes as he worked the miss shift as a trooper. I want to make sure I say that right. I want, I think it means midnight, but it was like he found a kindred spirit. His respect for you grew so much over the years, he always said how lucky we were to have you as chief. He was so supportive of the fire department, even if he gave you all a hard time about sleeping. If he wasn't giving you a jab, then you knew he didn't like you, and if he did, then you knew you were in his circle. I knew he gave you plenty of them through all the meetings, but he also had your back. I will always be thankful for your crew who came to the house on the morning of July 6th. They were so patient as we tried to convince Dave he needed to get to the hospital. They were kind, but firm with him. They could see the worry on both Alex's and my face that morning, and they waited and took their time while we all convinced him to go. In the ambulance, they kept us calm and treated him with dignity and respect. We may not have gotten the outcome we wanted, but I believe they gave us a few extra hours with him, and for that, I will be eternally grateful. Same with the police department. We will always be there to support you and the fire department. John Furno, Chris Furno, and the highway department, what can you say to the department that took the time to wax the dump truck and get it looking great to bring to the funeral? As we pulled up to the church and saw that, both Ben and I laughed. Honestly, how many people get the town's dump truck at their funeral? I think that will always be a bright spot in otherwise dark time. I don't think you realize how much that meant to us. Truly, thank you. Dave was always in awe at the amount of work you and your crew do and the budget you have. He knew that when you asked for something, it was because you needed it and not wanted it. Dave always values hard work, and he valued your department. He saw you guys out there working in the heat and snowstorms and appreciated all you do. I know he was very concerned when he heard of the problems with the air circulation at the Highway Barn and wished he could have fixed it right away. He was glad to call you a friend as well. I know there are so many others within the town hall to thank. I do thank you all for embracing Dave and honoring him. He may not have grown up in Douglas, but Douglas became his home, and he loved it. With love and gratitude, Andrea, Alex, and Ben.
Thanks for reading that, Matt. Thanks, Matt. Next is, is there anyone here for anything that is not currently listed on our agenda? Seeing as none, we will go right into the public hearing for St. Dennis Church, special one-day liquor license and possible votes. So we probably want to take a motion to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yeah, I would second that motion to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we have a general license application for St. Dennis Church. Is anyone here from St. Dennis? Come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tom Dakota. I'm chairman of the Finance Committee and a member of the Stewardship Committee on the one that filed the application for the license.
So you're doing a fundraiser?
It's, yeah, it's a combination fundraiser and building of a relationship with our parishioners, right? Just getting everybody involved, so.
Excellent. And the one-day alcohol license, I'm hoping it's something better than Sacramento wine.
We'll see what we can afford. No, it, yeah, you're, according to the law, you're only allowed to buy it from certain places, and, which we will do, and we're, are, we're going to be limiting drinks to two per person.
And Lisa, they have everything that they need for the?
Yep.
Not bad, but everything seems to be complete. Make a motion to grant them that one-day liquor license?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I live next door to Dave and Andrea, and he was a, he could be difficult, but he was, but he was, but he was a good guy. She's, she's doing pretty well. She seems to be busy, and, and that's, that's good, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Close it.
Second. We probably should have done that before we voted?
Yeah, we should have. We're a little out of order. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 You want to take a second vote on that or not?
No.
Okay, what's that?
Uh, we have Whitensville Fishing Game, special one-day liquor license, and one-day entertainment license and possible vote. You folks are from Whitensville Fishing Game.
Yeah.
It's for the field day, right?
Yes, sir.
Whatever you want to call it. You know the, you know the deal? I know the deal. Hopefully, all the paperwork will straighten out.
Yeah, she ran, certainly.
I felt bad for Brian because it was her first time spearheading everything and we're going back and forth.
That's what she said. She did okay.
Like, I'm not sure on these town politics things. What have I got to do? How do I do this?
She did.
Crash course.
It's your annual event, really. There's nothing different.
It's the same setup as us at the club.
It's the same.
Good. I mean, it's good, and it's just fun, and it's successful, so I'd make a motion to grant the special one-day liquor license as well as the entertainment license.
Not to be a stickler, but do we have to open the public hearing for it?
They don't even, they don't have butters, so there's nothing.
Okay, just make a show.
Yep.
Since I screwed up the last one.
Always Mike's fault.
I tried my best.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You guys are all set.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
So I screwed up the second one, too.
That's all right.
I'm consistent.
Because what we look for, Mike, is consistency.
So what I was asking, Lisa, about that, out of curiosity, everybody, yeah, under the liability certificate, on the previous one, it was, it specifically said liquor. On this one, it says general liability, but it's in the notes for the liability.
So it's covered?
Yeah, it's covered, but I was just acknowledging why I wasn't paying attention.
That's okay. We'll let it go, Mike. It's all good.
Oh, you won't. You're going to pick.
Oh, I'll get you later. All right, so we have the Blackstone River Valley Greenway Challenge Race and Possible Votes.
Hey.
Good evening.
You guys received a packet, I believe, right? So there's one update to it, so I wanted to just bring that updated page for you, so if you have it, in case you have any questions. And I can review what the changes, and you'd like me to. So just to summarize, as usual, we'll be coming from Oxbridge Riverbend Farm via street bikes, on road bikes, going into Wallam Lake area. We'll transition from the bikes into a trail run and then transition back onto bikes and head down to Lincoln Woods.
Are you going to ride in this one, Tim?
I'm not.
What the heck?
You guys keep talking about it every year, and you, I just never see you register.
Right. Guilty as charged. How long is the run in the woods?
Um, let me just double-check that. I have it in front of me. I think it's three point, two point, oh, wait, hold on. I will double-check it.
Would my Harley count as a road bike?
Three point three two. No. No, it's the pedaling kind, not, not even really the e-bike kind.
Maybe you can get a virtual.
So it's a three point three two mile trail run through Wallam Lake.
You can go on a buyer and use your Peloton.
Wow.
I think you should have to catch a fish at Lincoln Woods to win the race.
That would be good. That would be good. That would be good. That would be good.
That balances it out.
Yeah, it would.
Levels the playing field.
Well, so unfortunately, we, one of the reasons we've changed our courses because of the Blackstone being so low, we've had to move some things around. Didn't affect Douglas per se, but it certainly affected the start and the finish. So we have to go in a canal to get water, and then we have to go to Alney Pond at Lincoln Woods in order to get water this year, so.
So, and I saw in there, the fire chief's asking for an ALS detail?
Four hours.
Four hours.
Okay.
Does that pose any issues for you guys?
Just the cost. But we had this last year as well, it's the same amount of time, so, do you know if the pricing is the same?
That you'll have to speak with him.
Okay, I'll, I'll have, I'll have Charlie check with him.
Was it in his email, Lisa?
Well, we did a new rate with the contract, but I think this is the second year of the contract, so it might be the same.
Same as last year? Last year was the first year we did.
It might go up every year, so we just have to check the, the fire contract.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. Do you?
I do not. I would make a motion to approve the Blackstone Valley Greenway Challenge Race as it's presented in our packet.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, they do. Yes.
As I said that, I said, of course you do, but we've done that, we've had events in the past, and DCR had no idea.
Oh.
They had another event going, and it was a bit of a mess.
Yeah, oh, no, I know that Charlie has a very good, Charlie Thompson, who is the chairman of this, has been with the race since its beginning, and so I know he has a very good relationship with them. So we, we get all of our permits and everything from DCR that we know.
One question. I might have missed it, you might have said it while I was talking. It says, police department will record your details, see email. I was trying to find the email and, uh.
I think that she actually has them outlined in the segment?
Yes, and then Charlie will actually meet with the police chief, as he does each year, just to go over the route and verify the police detail.
Yeah, the Walnut Street, South Street, and she's got it highlighted with police.
We, we let the police departments tell us where the police details.
Yeah, I just seen the note on it.
Yeah.
Just asking.
Yeah, we, we have where we, we have had them in the past, and so we just re-review that with the police chiefs every year.
Does that satisfy your question, sir?
Motion then made and seconded.
Is there any further discussion?
No, thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
I'll be in contact tomorrow with you on that.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
All right, and we will be skipping over question, item number four on the agenda, moving into five, which is ARPA discussion and possible votes. There it is. The ARPA memo. So.
Considering Mr. Davis isn't here, is there something we want to do tonight? What do we need to do tonight, Mr. Administrator? Just give Al the opportunity to have input and, you know, do you want to pass over five or just read into five another proposal?
Well, I would, since you put another proposal in, if you would briefly discuss what it is.
Sure.
And it'll be added to the list, and that's fair. I don't think Al's going to miss anything on that.
Yep, no, I just, it's a pretty big.
So I had, I had put in an ARPA proposal on behalf of the, what do they call it?
Adult social center.
Adult social center. I keep wanting to say the senior center.
I don't know.
And that's just bad. Primarily, in talking with the director of the Adult Day Center.
Social center.
Adult social center. Let me just, social. I have to just write it down in a moment. They've been having some issues with getting some of the members to some doctor's appointments over in Milford because Elder Bus currently doesn't offer transportation over there. So I had put in a proposal for the acquisition of a handicap-accessible bus for eight to 10 passengers, with all the accommodations on it for, you know, obviously helping them get in, wheelchair-accessible, et cetera, in order to be able to provide transportation services for the doctor's appointments. There are some of the members of the Adult Social Center that don't have transportation to get to and from the center itself in order to utilize some of the services. So I think it would really be able to enhance participation and provide a valuable service to the, to the elder community. So the associated cost with it is approximately $45,000.
For the purchase of the vehicle?
For the purchase of the vehicle.
They only have staff.
Then you'd have staffing and insurance that would go on top of that.
Question, Mr. Administrator, is this something that could be incorporated into the special needs program? Just as a thought. We've touched briefly on it in the past, so.
Yeah, just so, I'll, I'll do the best I can to explain the rules as I know they are, but I think more research would be needed to get a final answer to your question. I think oftentimes, members of the public will ask, if those, if there are buses sitting up in the yard during the day, why aren't they put into use for the town? Couple of reasons. One is they are school buses that are approved for their specific use, and school buses may not be used for private charters or business outside of the school. And that is a longstanding set of rules. So that's why it doesn't go this way, right? We don't use school buses for town needs because we really cannot. The question would be, if the town had a bus, what could we do with it above and beyond it being a senior bus? Could we transport a team, for instance, a smaller team, from one athletic event to another? Could we use it for special needs? Could, could the schools call upon us basically as a vendor, almost, to provide them with additional service? I don't know the final answer to that question. I think the one thing I'm sensitive to from my work in the past is that the driver of a bus that's transporting special needs students often has to have qualifications above and beyond the driver's license. They may need to render assistance to any aid in going all the way up to the door stoop, and there may be other considerations.
Similar with the.
It could be similar with seniors, right? So it's worth looking into, but that's the state of play as best as I know.
Just to put it out there that way. We can address it. Do we need to vote on putting this on the list, or is it just a?
The list is open.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to it.
Would this be used to drive to the shopping centers?
For whatever the needs that would fall under, primarily the big need that's been coming out of the senior center, or the complaint that's been coming out of there, is that Elder Bus doesn't offer any means for them to get to their doctors in Milford.
Yeah. No, I was, I can't believe I'm the old guy on this board, but I remember when we stopped the service. It would be lovely to bring that back, they could put it on the list.
Yeah, it's kind of weird that we would have given that up, but.
It would have been pre-Moist days.
In the past, a lot of things got given up, so it's a matter of catching back up again.
It was, it was pre-Moist days, when the board was boring, not as much fun with color commentary as it is now. And it's gotten even more enhanced with our vice chairman.
He was just preventing me from making the comment. Anyways. So if we don't have to vote on it, I guess it would be on a list, Mr. Chairman?
Excellent. Brings us to number six, which is approved minutes for the July 5th meeting minutes, July 19th meeting minutes, and the July 19th executive session minutes and possible votes.
So this is where we pointed you the cable subcommittee representative. That was fun.
I know, but it was also the one we discussed, fees for the transportation.
Yeah.
It was a night full of excitement.
Yeah, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the July 5th, July 5th meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And one more, we have the executive session minutes from July 19, 2022. Make a motion that we approve those, retaining all.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You report, Mr. Administrator.
I actually have a lot. Let's see how fast I can move through it. First thing I'd like to remind folks, and we will be amping up our publicity around this, but the winter promises to have high energy prices. It is established already because the rates have been filed with the Department of Public Utilities for electricity. So for those folks who are living at home and may not be taking advantage of the town's aggregation program, you should call the selectman's office and get as much information as you can. There is website information, there's hard copy pamphlets. If Patrice has already done it, I think she's already had a guest speaker, if not, it's coming up soon at the Adult Social Center. And all of this information is very accessible and very understandable. What it boils down to is a lot of people in Massachusetts got together to buy power together in the marketplace, and they buy it on a forward basis, so they buy future supplies. And the way it's working out right now is at a much more favorable price than what people can get from National Grid, or, I don't think we have any ever-source customers in this town, it's just National Grid. And it would be a shame not to take advantage of it. If you're on fixed income, you're looking at just the power generation part of your bill, which is about half your bill, going up from, you know, 12 cents or so a kilowatt-hour to almost 25 cents. And you'll notice that in your pocketbook. So we, we offer this option as a way to get around that, and we hope that people take advantage of it. Many, many people in Douglas do. So if you have questions, I'm sure just talking to your neighbors about it might actually help.
Matt, do we know the saturation rate? I think we smoothed everyone in, a lot of people.
So when we, when we joined the aggregation program, which was before my time here, but when the town joined, it was an opt-out program, right? So you put everybody into the aggregation, and they had to opt out to get out. There's, there were some people who did that, though. You know, people are very loyal to the brand, and they know the company, and they want to stick with it.
Certainly.
Right. And not really, energy prices are so volatile, you don't really know if it's a good deal or not, but we can tell you absolutely, our rate is fixed and locked in, and so are National Grids for the winter. You can just do a simple comparison. The next item on my list is the, we are now.
Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 One more, we have the executive session minutes from July 19, 2022. Make a motion that we approve those, retaining all.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You report, Mr. Administrator.
I actually have a lot. See how fast I can move through it. First thing I'd like to remind folks, and we will be amping up our publicity around this, but the winter promises to have high energy prices. It is established already because the rates have been filed with the Department of Public Utilities for electricity. So for those folks who are living at home and may not be taking advantage of the town's aggregation program, you should call the selectman's office and get as much information as you can. There is website information, there's hard copy pamphlets. If Patrice has already done it, I think she's already had a guest speaker. If not, it's coming up soon at the Adult Social Center. And all of this information is very accessible and very understandable. What it boils down to is a lot of people in Massachusetts got together to buy power together in the marketplace. And they buy it on a forward basis. So they buy future supplies. And the way it's working out right now is at a much more favorable price than what people can get from National Grid. Or I don't think we have any ever source customers in this town. It's just National Grid. And it would be a shame not to take advantage of it. If you're on fixed income, you're looking at just the power generation part of your bill, which is about half your bill, going up from, you know, 12 cents or so a kilowatt hour to almost 25 cents. And you'll notice that in your pocketbook. So we offer this option as a way to get around that and we hope that people take advantage of it. Many, many people in Douglas do. So if you have questions, I'm sure just talking to your neighbors about it might actually help.
Do we know the situation right? I think we smoothed everyone in. A lot of people.
So when we, when we joined the aggregation program, which was before my time here, but when the town joined, it was an opt-out program, right? So you put everybody into the aggregation and they had to opt out to get out. There were some people who did that, though. You know, people are very loyal to the brand and they know the company and they want to stick with it.
Certainly.
Right. And not really, energy prices are so volatile. You don't really know if it's a good deal or not. But we can tell you absolutely, our rate is fixed and locked in and so are National Grid's for the winter. You can just do a simple comparison. The next item on my list is the, we are now in a category three drought, which is a moderate drought. Every type of emergency has its own specific profile and operational requirements. And drought's a funny one because it creeps up on you. You don't really notice. After a while, you notice the grass getting brown and plants starting to die and needing to water your garden more and animals stressing out. We have met as an emergency management team to discuss what we might need to do if conditions continue on the current path and we're in a deep water shortage going through the fall. First and foremost, if you have a shallow well at home, pay attention to your water levels and the quality of the water that comes out of your tap because shallow wells are the first ones to feel the stress. And if you find yourself in that situation, the town can provide you with water resources. We would be directing people to the fire station for portable water, a supply not only for yourself but for your animals, if you have animals. So don't, don't be too stressed out about not being able to, to get water. If you have a shallow well, you know, this might be the kind of year you might consider doing something different if you can afford it. The other item that is very important about the current drought situation is today was a prime example of a day where it got windy. The humidity was extremely low. So it's operating almost like a hair dryer in the forest. And there have been a fair number of wildfires, wildland fires across Massachusetts in the last couple of months. And when the ground gets extremely dry, brush fires get very hot and they start to burn deep into the ground. And they can take a very long time to put out and a tremendous amount of effort. So smaller fire departments are often taxed in stretching their resources to be able to contain a fire. So there's a relatively small fire in Gloucester, Massachusetts in terms of its acreage. I think it's about a 14 acre fire, a 10 acre fire. And it's been burning for 10 days. And the fire department there has fully exhausted all its resources. So there's actually air support coming in, dropping water from planes and helicopters just to try to efficiently put the thing out. But it's right up against people's fences and backlot lines. So it's, Gloucester's a fairly densely populated area. So it's an example of what can happen. And the last part of it is when we are in a class four day like we were today, burning outside is a very, very bad idea, even to roast marshmallows or hot dogs. Just, just hold on to it for a couple of weeks, if you don't mind. Because things can spread very, very quickly. And we had one homeowner in the last couple of days thought he was just going to have a little fire in the backyard and burn some stuff up that he had in a pile. He ended up with a very impressive display of flames. So we're not doing it yet. But I think as we go deeper into this, if the threat continues to be at such a high level, we won't be issuing just warnings anymore. Chapter 48, Section 13 does empower the fire chief to write tickets for up to, not to exceed $500. But the most important thing for people to know is that if you get something going and you damage somebody else's house or there's a significant fire started, you are potentially liable for the entire cost of suppression. And that is not trivial. You know, 14, 15 people running around, equipment, resources. Right, so you may have filed, see yourself facing claims. So it's really not worth the risk. Drought is drought. And we could have a wet couple of weeks and be out of the woods. So we're not going to be Chicken Little and start sending out all kinds of messages. But it is, it's bad enough now where we should take note of it. This week, now, rain is now forecast for tomorrow. It set off some plans that were in place. Earlier, or it was actually late last week, you saw a bunch of folks walking around town with, you know, yellow and orange blaze vests and they were putting pamphlets on people's doors. The sewer department is going to be smoke testing the sewer lines around town to determine where we're leaking or where we're getting infiltration from illegal connections. Just a word to the wise folks, we're doing the smoke testing because our mathematical models have all made it pretty clear that we have issues to resolve. So it's already been detected. So now the smoke test isn't to detect leaks, it's to find out exactly where they are. And so if for some reason, let's make it easy for folks. You know, if the person who owned the house before you did something they weren't supposed to and the smoke test is done in your neighborhood because you have town sewer, you might have a small amount of smoke in your house, right? Because you've got some kind of connection in the basement from a sump pump or something else. It may, it's often people take the rainwater from their roofs and they run a pipe under the ground. And those kind of connections are not allowed. So you'll see some smoke come out of people's gutters. And I hope it doesn't happen. But based on the mathematical results and the water in, water out models, we know when we have storm events, we have a surge in flow to the treatment plant, which is clearly an indication that we're picking up quite a bit of stormwater runoff. But don't be alarmed. And everyone in the fire department, police department's been made aware. When they're in your neighborhood, they will be sending messages out that, you know, we're testing in this area. So they've already given you pamphlets. They will come back and give you another warning if they're in your neighborhood.
Police department also put a notification on Facebook today.
Yep.
Going to refrain from commenting.
Yeah, please do. Moving on to the water project. Folks will notice that CJP has picked up their equipment, moved on to their next project. So the water piece of the project is now done. And many thanks to CJP. It was a good firm to work with. They really moved quickly up and down Gilboa Street. There were some complaints about night work to be expected. But for the most part, with the exception of one very stubborn set of valves one night, we really, it really went very smoothly. So we're optimistic that we're going to come in slightly under budget for this part of the project. And we've also hit our deadlines with, with our private development partners. So they're reasonably pleased. I think there was one day last week where Bob Sullivan had opened the hydrant at Skanel. And there was so much pressure at the building being built on that side of Lackey Dam Road that water went over the, over the street, which is a good, good sign. I just put the finishing touches. I'm just checking my math now for the premium pay ARPA memo that I will now send to the consultant and to Gene Lovett for review. I want to make sure Gene has all the documentation she needs to feel like the quantity, the numbers are right and so she can pay out. You capped the budget at $250,000. Let me translate into what that means. The average premium pay is going to be right around $3,400 as an average. And it's a pretty tight average. You've got some outliers. You've, you had definitely four or five firefighters who really stepped up and put in just massive amounts of time during the early months of COVID. And so the biggest check is going to be about $10,000. But there aren't many of those, okay? Most of them are going to be in that $3,400 range. For, and it's public safety that pulls that average up. For town hall employees and for other civilian employees, it's, it's less than that. It's more like $2,000. Which compares pretty much in the same ballpark as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You know, Governor Baker issued $3,000 to frontline workers. So we're in the very same ballpark.
And the $250 covered everybody?
Yeah. We didn't blow any maximums. We didn't blow any caps. So it seems like a good spot. I also put the finishing touches today on my first compensation table reform proposal. So I'm, I'm breaking it into digestible pieces so I don't come back to the table with all of it at once. Trying to build consensus and a feeling around it, one group at a time. So the initial memo is about call firefighter rates of compensation and call emergency medical techs. If you were to look at the table that we have now, God bless you, and compare it to the union rates of compensation for full-time employees, you'll see a number of anomalies. And what's happened over time is that we've made spot fixes to this particular chart in order to be able to attract and retain people to the call side, especially when the talent pool is smaller and it's getting harder to get people to, to come work for us on a part-time basis. I actually think, I was surprised at, with just a couple of logical principles, we were able to pull the system back together again. So the, the primary notion is one of rank and use the rank as your, that's your indication of dedication, commitment, experience, skill level of the ranks that have been assigned by the chief. And right now, for instance, we're a little bit out of whack. So you can be a lieutenant on the call fire department and you show up to a fire and you sit there for six hours working hard on the fire. And your rate of compensation is $15.56, which is just a little bit above minimum wage to be a lieutenant. And you may have 10 or 15 years of experience as a firefighter and we're paying you $15.56. A brand new paramedic who might be in their early twenties just finished their certification and got their ticket to, to ride alone and to make ALS level decisions. We start them out at $22.63, right? And we pay an awful lot of attention to something that's actually very hard to pay close attention to and keep track of, which is when people respond to an incident, there may be both things going on, both an emergency medical situation and a fire. Think of a motor vehicle accident. How in the world are we supposed to parse out whether the people responding are on a medical call or on a fire call? It gets a little bit silly to be blunt about that. When somebody is your employee, you pay them what they're worth when they show up. So the highest level of qualification, their highest rate of pay should be what we as a policy pay people for responding to events in town. The only exception to that would be people who have only emergency medical tech certification and are not qualified to go into a fire. They should be in the ambulance department's payroll system because that's what they are. They're medics, on-call medics. And we should pay them only as on-call medics. So I try to lend some sense to that system. The plan right now is to, first of all, get the leadership of the fire department, both on the full-time and, and call side to review the recommendation and make any edits they'd like to make. And then I'd like to sit down with the collective bargaining unit and the call membership. If we are roughly on the same page, you know, and it looks like it's a viable draft and it has the support of the people that's aimed to fix the situation, I want to bring it here for our first reading and have the select board refer that to the personnel board. So the personnel board can start to roll up its sleeves and start to work on the comp table and the job descriptions that match the proposed levels of pay. I want to go to town meeting with personnel board feeling like they were part of this process and have had the chance to weigh in. Ultimately, it is town meeting's decision whether or not to approve the proposed comp table. What would it mean budget-wise? The call line item in the budget for both fire and ambulance is not a very big number compared to the full-time budget for full-time staff. And it might go up about 7%. The budget forecast that I built last year had that already in it. So the number I'm working to drive towards to balance the budget for fiscal '24, I already had that information in the budget. So I don't really think I'm going to be in bad shape trying to get that part of it done.
So is that just this year going into free cash then?
So no, the, the, the plan is to bring it to fall town meeting and have a discussion at fall town meeting, but to implement the new tables for fiscal '24 at spring town meeting. The budget would reflect the new compensation tables approved by town meeting in the fall. Quick update on the radio project. I was able to finally find the person at American Tower. My phone call had the desired result. Even though I left a voicemail message, they finally reached out back to our vendor and the, you know, there's a lively conversation now about trying to finish the American Towers component of this by the end of the week. And if that's the case, then we will start moving quickly towards install. I will make no mystery about what I said. I said, you know, we're getting some calls that are starting to get a little bit sideways because people can't hear each other talking and it's unacceptable. You can't be what's in our way. Everything's ready. You can't be in our way. All we're asking for is permission to put a couple of whips up on your, on your tower. It's not like we're going to make the thing lopsided with something that weighs a ton. Not doing that. Other project updates very quickly. Generator bids will be open tomorrow for the municipal center. We did a walkthrough. We had one vendor show up and we had a supplier show up. I believe the engineer is right that when you come to a walkthrough on a project like this, you're probably going to be the winning bidder. Because you have seen what you need to do and your prices are going to be really close to spot on. This is a very difficult project to, I mean, you got the specs are part of the bid package, but this was something that I think people really needed to see. Because there were a lot of questions asked. So that's tomorrow. We have already opened the paving bids. We had a little bidder came in that was within the town's budget, which is, we actually had two, three that made the town budget. But there's a pretty good distance between the lowest bidder and the next lowest bidder. You know, respectable difference. So Stantec is going through the item-by-item bids just to make sure that the lowest bid is truly responsive to our requirements. But it looks like, you know, that budget's going to come in right around $960,000. The town had over a million. So there'll be a little bit of room there for contingency. The lowest, the apparent lowest bidder was Hershaw, paving out of Oxbridge. The day tank bid was out and we have a successful bidder there. And I'm just waiting to sign that contract. The mathematical analysis has been completed on, or we've taken the quote process as far as we can on curbside pickup of, of rubbish and recyclables. Fascinating conversation. It's a whole heck of a lot closer to the budget for trash removal or the transfer station as it is now than people would have thought. It's very, very close. And a big chunk of it is capital that's purchased upfront. So when you do this, you buy the bins, the rollaway bins upfront as part of your initiation of the service. You have to pay for that. And if you took that service charge out of it, say that's just basically a one-time expense. Your annual run rate is going to look darn close to what it costs to run the transfer station. Without further information, we can't get a more refined bid. But it's in the ballpark. So we're going to continue to, to work on this as, at least to give the town the option. We all know, I know, because I've been tried to, I've tried to go the other direction. Once you give people curbside pickup, you will never be able to take it away or fundamentally change the service. So if that were to be a live option that the town wanted to consider as a service, let's make sure we spec it exactly the way we want it upfront for affordability and other considerations. Because if you try to change a program later on, if you try to add, in a former life, I tried, we, we did add, because we had to, pay as you throw bags to an existing charge for pickup. And the pitchforks and torches come out when you try to do stuff like that. It becomes a service that people really begin, start to rely upon.
But it's close enough that it's worth.
It's close enough where it is not crazy talk.
Worth the exercise.
I'll just echo my concern about the narrow, windy country roads and speeds on those roads and needing to play slalom as you navigate said roads. I don't think it's feasible in the grand scheme of things. I think it might be insane. Math away if you want.
Sense of adventure.
Yeah, well, I don't.
At the end of the day, you're probably correct. But it's worth the effort to.
You know, my passion for pedestrians.
I do.
Speaking of which, I want to give a shout out Speaking of which, you want to give a shout out to the highway department for starting to paint some of the crosswalks again, just in time.
Yeah, road painting is, we're in the process of trying to get that done. I, I can't, this vendor community with street line painting is really adventurous group. That's all I'm going to say. It gets wild and woolly with the guys who paint street lines. You know, there's a reason why some of them have to get painted over and ground up. Right now, they're having all kinds of equipment problems. Where are we in the EDA process? We have accepted the grant. We've sent back all the necessary paperwork. We're getting ready for a conference call to establish the federal procurement rules so that we can go out to bid for the sewer portion. So the funding's been received. I think there's been some confusion on various websites around where we are with the sewer project. It hasn't started yet. So it's not done because it hasn't been started yet. The sewer pipe's going to go on the opposite side of the street, because code requires sewer pipes to be X amount of distance, 10 feet away from water pipes. So there will be a trench on the other side of the street, and sewer will go in.
So I'll have a bike lane going the other way.
Exactly. It's quite an exhaustive process, and it may be in the town's best interest to, to retain the services of a consultant. The finance director is recommending that we do that in order to keep the ARPA stuff straight, and our existing projects straight, the ongoing operations of the town straight, and now EDA is another bucket of, of work that needs to be done. So it needs to be, might need some help with it. We can probably pay for those expenses out of the grant itself. That's a question I'm going to ask in the conference call when we do it. The last thing is our budget outlook. Just want to remind everyone that it's such a large impact to the town's budget and its revenue picture, both in terms of building permits and new growth, and then the absorption of the new growth into the tax base is the part of the levy going forward. Our timing is different than it was when we were discussing this issue even just a few weeks ago. With the end of the fiscal year, we had not yet signed a purchase and sales agreement on the land the town sold to make the CRG project possible. So this year that we're in, when we, the year that just immediately closed, won't close with a large impressive amount of free cash that we had anticipated would have been the result of the real estate transaction. All of that revenue now is getting pushed into fiscal '24. But fiscal '24 will be a bit of, I'm sorry. The year that just closed was '22. We're in '23. When '23 closes, we will see a big revenue bump, because we will have the entire real estate transaction, the building permit fees, and quite possibly a big portion of the new growth, because the building may actually be largely built by December 31st, 2023. So that's going to be a pretty significant change. But it's not being phased in one year at a time the way I would have hoped. It would, it's all coming in one big splash, if you will. And that will probably have an impact on the what we plan, what we're able to do with one-time revenues versus trying to smooth ourselves into the longer-term, more aggressive revenue forecast. See what I'm saying? There might be a year gap where we just have to sit tight and accrue the free cash and do, use it the next year to, to make that smoothing happen. Are there any questions about that? That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seeing as none, I would ask Mr. Bonin for one of his famous motions.
Are we going into it?
We are, sir.
All right. Make a motion that we move into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining and then to leave the executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bonin, aye.
It's better, guy.
Morris, aye.